All meetings order. We have a call I'm taking motion to approve the agenda in the minutes please.
I'm making motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
Oh, second.
Alright, all favor I?
Alright, I propose.
Morning, Rich.
Morning. Some project updates for you. We had our recon for three hundred fifty. Bridge replacement box cover. That's what PCI they thinking about late August or September on a start in that. That's just two miles north of the family line. Obviously, today I noticed that. Three ninety up be shut down. I drove through there. They got signage. They don't. They didn't have it up early this morning yet, but. My guess is they got the detour signage, post and stuff will be doing that.
That might work out in my favor then.
Yeah, yeah, coming in that early. And one oh five, I see they got some signs laying down. I see the contractors been into the fireworks place there starting to level ground, so. I think they gotta do some survey yet. I think last I talked, they were gonna be mid. Kind of mid-August here with some survey things and then late August we should have. We'll see. I mean, they're. I know they were struggling so denial of projects too.
But they're open or is September?
I think they're still trying to hit late August here. We'll see the things in advance. Right now. I haven't had a conversation with the contractor for quite a while, but I see they are doing some things and then also it's gonna happen first, so. Once they get done. Or once, once we close on the roll, we've got that color we want to replace under nine there on the west end. Three, reset it or relay it. And then we do have a. There's a bridge on there. We gotta mill the whole asphalt off on the sea. What I'm worried about is there's an old asphalt overlay up. I don't know what that deck looks like underneath, so. We're gonna mill it down because we're bringing in bridge approaches to that deck, but if things get ugly, we'll have to look at another. Maybe we put other asphalt layer on top and then we worry about the bridge. Right now, it's hard to tell. When they put an asphalt wearing course on top, it's hard to say what the concrete does underneath because. You know, asphalt's permeable, just like concrete can be and stuff leaches through when you know that that looks like. Any indications now are that the bridge is fine. There's no issues with it, but once you peel it off, we'll know for sure, so. Just a little bit on the projects there and then. You know, we've been shorthanded here for one on almost two years now, I think. I'd like to see if I can put an advertisement out to at least one more person hired since we've been short. With the, the work comp and everything else. Just need to break somebody else in it. So I think I might. Push forward and put an advertisement out soon for at least one more.
You're talking. I actually talked about that with spring. It's never.
Yeah, we just never got there.
So I thought you're, when you talked last fall, you're gonna wait till spring and get, try to get one more higher.
We'll see what this. So I think that's what we're gonna. Yeah, it's, it's tough. It's, it's. We had a week, try and hire a week. Three applicants, four applicants.
For gravy county job?
Okay, work as hard as I like this. Anyway, that's, that's where we're at secondary roads and the guys are out trying to do guardrail maintenance, things like that, so we're doing what we can. Rock runs still running, so.
Chasing trucks around?
Yeah, well. Hopefully, I mean, they don't need to be right on top of the trucks, but. The way the belly dump spread, it's pretty nice. They don't have to be on top of you.
Road survey going on right now. It's the DOT or something. I've had all the corners up over the.
Oh, yeah, they're done. They only came in for a week, so they think the road, the road.
Three ninety up in Thrush.
They're good. I mean, good, good conversations, but they, they go, they, we had FHWA DOT LTAP. Sheriff was out there with me and they didn't have everybody they wanted there because some of them, the timing, all of a sudden they canceled. Who was it? The governor's.
GTSP.
GTSB. They couldn't make it. They canceled last minute the state. Alright, so they're gonna. Transfer notes over and see where that, but they wanna. Compile all their notes together and get their ideas together. You know, let us know. They did, they did use that swear word though, didn't they? Around and about.
It's on AJ's side of the county. I'm okay with myself.
We did talk about fullway stop a little bit and the, the pluses and minuses, the cautions and everything else. It's like, like I told him, I'm not opposed to full stop, but we better make sure we know. If we do what we're doing, then we've got everything. Proper, not just do it because, so. They'll come back with their recommendations. I don't know how long it will take them, but.
Yeah, something.
Yeah. Let's go over topic that intersection, so. And, you know, the discussion was, is the intersectioners people? You know? People are choosing not to stop. And either they're choosing not to stop or they're not paying attention. I guess that's one thing, but. You know? It's, and if you look at traffic council from the intersection was set up the way it is. You know, we've got northbound, southbound stopping. And usually you stop the. Road with the least amount of traffic. We are, well, traffic patterns have changed. They're a lot closer to equal now, but I still think that, that the north-south gets more traffic than it is the west. And so. But it, it's, there's always a high risk of. Switching traffic patterns and intersection because of. People that have habits, you know? Right, and so you, you run the risk of. Potentially making the intersection. Or less safe. Because of habits and anything else, but. We'll get all the data. We're gonna combine and get all the data we need and then we'll. Bring it back and we'll talk about it.
Sounds good. Yes, Rich?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any claims today? They claims. Do you guys get to look over the claims?
Yes.
Question, comments, concerns? Take a motion to approve the claim.
Oh, and did you see that there was a special one too, so that we could? Yeah.
Yeah, motion to approve the claim and a special claim. Right, there's a second. Another discussion? Favor I?
Bye, bye.
I propose. Hey, payroll eligibility or summary changes? Liquor license?
Nope.
Fireworks?
They had called me on vacation. I couldn't say no, Dave.
So we have two of them. One's the day of Halloween and.
His granddaughter shooting them off for her birthday.
Cool. And then one for Joshua Corney for family picnic.
And that's an annual one. They do it every year and he has two dates, just in case it's.
Make a motion to approve the fireworks permits.
There's motions or second.
I'll second.
Right, another session? There are none. I'll say right.
Alright, I propose.
Alright. Resolution twenty twenty one dot oh eight dot oh two setting for percentage of funding. Property tax credits and exemptions for assessment year twenty twenty.
Okay, this is something that I, when I was looking for something else to copy and steal. For another resolution, I saw this and I ran it by our auditor and she's like, yeah, you should probably be doing that, so this will happen when we. Find out. What? The credits are gonna be because we get a. We get a letter from Department of Revenue. And it, it says what the percentages are and all that good stuff. So as soon as we get that going forward, we'll, we'll do it every year at the same time, but this is just a little late catching up, so. That's, it, it's just a formality thing, basically.
But helps and helps with their audits.
Yep.
That's what matters, so.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one dot oh eight dot oh two? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other discussion out? Roll call vote, Lowberg.
Eyes.
Maybe by stone eye. Resolution will pass.
And you had grabbed that already. You're ahead of the game. Okay.
Alright, destruction of claims and warrants up to fiscal year twenty sixteen.
Chelsea's chomping the shred again. Well, and now we're almost to the point where anything that we have. To get rid, well. Up to two thousand sixteen is already scanned. So going forward, we'll just be able to pitch the stuff and we still have it. So then we'll have to decide. How many years we wanna keep.
Electronically.
That's up to you.
When?
Whatever your.
Cause we don't wanna keep any more than. You know, because we wouldn't wanna have to go back ten, twenty years on a open.
I just back.
It could end up being a lot of work if we had to go on an open record request. Yeah, that we might wanna.
Well, it depends upon your retention policy. So as long as you have a retention policy, you're good. Cause that's all we're entertained.
We'll have to talk about that then.
Yeah, but it's just like we have to, we're gonna have to redo the retention policy too, because that's gotta change.
You, you don't have to keep those forever, do you? Good.
Good. I do read them as fast as I can.
But they're somewhere.
Hanging somewhere. They're out there in Joel's world.
I diverted.
Nope, I will make a motion to further destruction of claims and warrants up to FY twenty sixteen.
Right, the motions are second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All favor I?
Alright.
I propose. Alright, straight away, Chelsea. Okay, what was that? Melissa?
Morning. I'm just following up on a port authority and working with client today, so.
Perfect, sounds good. Um. Have you heard any more interest from the? The original? Prospect that won a lot of eleven?
No, not yet.
I heard anything back from them. Well, I know they were interested in connection fees, right? They're saying, okay, I know Jason was on vacation last week, so I'll, I'll make a call to him. See where we're at or what. What he's thinking there, so.
Okay.
Peoples, Peoples is helping us with water rate stuff, so hopefully we get something figured out here real soon.
And I forgot to put the guy back on from last week, if you wanted him back on the agenda, but I didn't know if you had anything in writing or if you had anything to Jeff.
John.
Yeah. So just let me know when you.
No, I haven't been back from Jeff, so we'll probably wait till next week. Cause I know Jeff was on vacation last week also. I did forward that stuff on to him or. Maybe Melissa did, but either way, I know he's got it, so we'll just wait and see what he says as well, and maybe we can discuss it again next week. But at least let Jeff look at it and see. Okay, Melissa, anything else? Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too.
Water and wastewater. If there are any new there. Said Jason was on vacation, so he shouldn't be getting us that. Great. For that and the water tower.
Instinct.
Or stuff on that, so. American Rescue Plan discussion and possible action.
Committee.
Committee.
We really need to start having meetings and I, I gotta read up some more and. See what other counties are doing, but I think it'll probably be, you probably want most, kind of like the security committee, probably want the majority of the. Committee or the departments involved, I would guess.
Yep, I know if they have a thought on what they can use for, they should be involved in athletics, so.
You know, other counties have mentioned committees. I guess I never did hear from them. This was some of the other supervisors I've been talking with on size or who was all involved, but they didn't say they had selected committees that do that, so.
Well, and I'd say start collecting any information, the. Ideas that other counties are doing. I think I'd start, I, I've been trying to start a folder with that. If there's anything that could be beneficial here too.
Right, what I've read is they usually get one from each department on it. Jamie Catron did say they'd be sending out more information here in the next couple of weeks. Okay, from their committee.
So what day of the week, do you wanna, wanna try to lump it into Monday too, or what, what day of the week do you, because we'll probably wanna have our first meeting in the next week or two, I would.
Try to be one supervisor and rest of the department heads.
That'll work.
Maybe better.
Probably.
Let's do it right after a regular meeting.
Yeah, let's do the Mondays. I can help make that one, so.
So do you wanna start like next Monday or the week after? Okay.
Let's start next Monday at least. And in the meantime, maybe have. Department heads reach out to your neighboring. Offices, department heads, friends. And see what they kind of got going on, see if they're in committees or what their, what their involvement is to distribution and have a little. Information on what the others are doing in the area.
Yeah, start making a list.
Yep.
So you can get it done by ten?
I'd like to. Put it down now and.
You can adjust as needed.
We can adjust.
Tentatively schedule for ten, you'll just say whatever our meeting is over. Otherwise.
Oh, okay, so budget amendment.
Budget amendment discussion, yes.
We're already gonna be amending for, not for Joel. That was last, and that was my fault. The road. For sure.
What are you amending though? Because I.
Or, oh, yeah, you said you already programmed it, okay. Um, possibly the transfers of how it's gonna shake out. I gotta think about it a little bit more.
Through the annual report right now. We have carryover, but again, we have carryover because of projects start and stop and it. And we've been efficient lately too. We don't always get all of our money spent where we need to. We just run out of time, but.
You're always a moving target.
We are, and it's tough. That's, it's a tough budget to track. But maybe there's a little bit we can. Use out of it too, we're seeing.
Well, and.
There's always equipment and equipment can suck a budget up real fast, so we're looking at, we're gonna. I don't know if I have a whole lot in the equipment budget now, but we didn't buy some things last year. We're gonna carry over some money. So there's probably some equipment things we're looking at with. With the, the lead time on equipment, it could be a while, and that's tough to budget for too. You figure you wanna get it spent here, but. Then for the bill, you till you get it.
Why not show up till next year?
So.
Yeah, I found out last, or two weeks ago, that five hundred thousand dollars of the highway number five money is in a. CD until February.
Really?
And there's early withdrawal penalties, so that's why I reached out to Rich to make sure at least five hundred of it could be.
We start off pretty quick. We've got the carryover balance that's high enough, but I mean, I don't know where you've got the money, but my budget says it's there.
Well, that's Jake and we haven't heard from Jake. I figured that out on my own.
Okay.
But, um. And even if, if we could leave five hundred in as kind of a. Rainy day or whatever in that highway one oh five, that probably wouldn't hurt either.
I just, what I'm saying is that, because mine fluctuates so much, there should be. Money in there. I mean, we start off the year with a rock run and we start, you know, puking out money like crazy after the rock. We start getting rock run bills, so. There's always that big hit and I don't know. Where you guys' funding comes from or where, where it is there, but we just send the bills in. We don't. You know, we know the money is supposed to be there. We just give them paid according to budget.
I spend the money and then it's magically there somewhere.
My checks haven't balanced yet, so. But so I mean.
But, but, yeah, the behind the scenes.
It's when you guys get property taxes, but we also get road use taxes that come in, so. So I don't know.
We'll.
When you, when you. For amendment, you're just not.
Well, we already got a, at some point. We got amended for workman's comp and. Um. Insurance, I guess, because those are both more than what they were gonna be. And I think there was already something else too, right? I'll look at it and see if it's enough to do it now, or if we can just wait for a little while and see what else shakes out. I just wanna make sure we're okay with getting money to. The company for the highway.
Yeah.
It goes a little fast.
Yeah. Yeah.
You've got three million bucks in two weeks.
So that's why I have to have everything lined up.
And the overlay one oh five. It will take away this one. It's on there the other day. Boy, that road is choppy.
It's terrible. We tried filling stuff in to kind of alleviate some of that, just to get by. It'll, it'll, you know, it's a smooth plane.
I just, I mean, it should be a new, that won't transfer through at some point.
I think the stuff you're feeling is just the, the lack of material in the joints. There's not a.
Oh, this was on, I was on, I was on a player trainer driving one oh five and it was, it was just constantly.
It'll clean out.
Okay.
I mean, one oh five out here did it.
Yeah, this came out really good, yeah.
I just curious.
Yeah, no, I always think about, we talk about transfer stuff, but I mean, it's like, okay, they should be, it's on a. Yeah, yeah, no, they, they run laser and then we, we estimate, you know, those, those, those deficiencies get calculated in where. Yeah, we say a six inch overlay, but in those deficient areas, it might even be more, because I don't want less than six inches, so there's.
More.
What's that? Well, there, there, you know, the cross, if the cross section is lower on the edges, because, well, this is an old concrete, so there's less. Non-uniformity in it, but we did foothill stuff that was Thomas and Mansker and the, the road slowly slopes down and we were eight to ten inches on the edges, just because you get that cross. And we cut that before. We did okay on yields and stuff, but yeah, it's, you'll get a smooth plane back out of it and we'll get some reflective cracking iron. Already planned for that. We've got fiber in the mix and so we'll hold it together.
Okay. The department head discussion. Anyone? So I did send an email out to all the department heads that the governor did release ninety five hundred dollars of carriers funds. For hardware, laptops, monitors, webcams. So if anybody has a need, I've had already, some folks reach out to me, so I can, those will probably be delivered. Beginning of December properly, so we'll see that equipment.
Have you already spent it?
No, but it's a one shot. You can only have one order and one over only, only order up to ninety five hundred. You can't go over. And it's one per jurisdiction too, so if you've got cities, they get the ninety five hundred bucks too.
Each city does.
Each city does.
That is a lot of computers for your little community.
So, so you don't spend it, then possibly it goes back to pot.
So you'll take care of our ninety five hundred?
I, I got you covered.
He'll try. It's gonna be tough.
It's gonna be.
You work on it.
I'll see what I.
Yeah. I'm relying on you to take care of that.
Or something for, what's that?
Maybe I'll talk to you about some.
It's, it's very specific equipment, so, yeah, it's, it's not iPads. It's, it's this model laptop and this model monitor and.
Alright.
So, but yeah.
This is a lucky one. They got that contract.
Yeah.
Is it Dell or?
There's Dells and there's Microsofts and there's one of those.
The big three.
Yeah. Well, Chinese gotta make some money. I think that's the big thing I had. Going forward, there's some other stuff going on. One thing we did get alert from Secretary State's office, they are opening up their website to bug hunters. So. So there's a bunch of researchers out there that go after, you know, you offer money if they find stuff wrong with your website or programs or whatever, right?
So we're paying the crooks.
Yeah, we get the hackers more gross.
Well, it's the white hats. Supposedly it's the white hats. Now, the only thing is when Ohio did that, which of course we're gonna follow Ohio. When Ohio did that, the researchers, instead of all focusing on the state site, they went after some of the county sites too. For whatever reason, thinking it was fun or I don't know. So they did send a word out saying that our website and our, our traffic might. Suffer depending upon how many people are hitting it, so. August twenty third, we're gonna be looking pretty hard and heavy just to see what kind of traffic we get from. From their, their project. Yeah.
Fantastic.
At least they gave us heads up.
Yeah, by the way.
Anybody, department heads in Zoom land? Alright, supervisor weekly.
Yes, I didn't have anything.
Yeah. Work?
I had a workforce development. Quarterly meeting. Had a lot on agenda to do with all our one-stop operators and all that stuff, but we're all up to stuff, which is good and moving forward with the new region and. Everything's going good so far.
Like the deadlines with the state?
We did, we did some of families and still figuring out budgeting, you know, what we're gonna get for money and how we're gonna do those out and stuff, but it's, it's going well. We've got good people in place and we're all getting along, which is good. Same region we just got out of for mental health, so. All's well, and we actually, I didn't, I attended by zone, but we had our first in-person meeting and they are talking about trying to move it around the region for meetings and stuff, but. I kind of think it'd be foolish to bring them clear over here, same way me going clear over the Mississippi River, you know, but. Central. Yeah, I think right now they use Waverly, which is a pretty good location, I think, for eight pole.
A few get spoiled, but at least it's there for.
Yeah, it kind of covers everybody from both sides, the far sides of the region, so, but you know, everything's going great, so we're, we just keep plugging along and. We're concerned about getting employees and stuff too. They're talking about what they can do for that, but it's, you know, we'll see. So.
Okay, it's good. Well, I had a care connections meeting over in Embersburg on Tuesday. Going all there, we're working through the. State funding and unfortunately with the short timeframe and the way the state jumped in. We've got some money to spend. We can't change our levy. We were, we discussed if we could possibly change our levy all the way across the board to drop it, but state won't let us. So we're trying to. Kind of do it like they did with some cares funding. We're gonna maybe take some grants. And hand out to some people that provide services. To help.
Enhance that.
Enhance, yeah, basically strengthen whatever they need, kind of just a one-time deal. We can help you with some funding for certain things, you know. Obviously be careful what you buy because, you know, this is a one-time deal, so. It's kind of unfortunate it had to be that way. We couldn't just drop property taxes even more.
But they won't let you carry it over either, so you have a little budget cushion just in case.
We gotta get forty percent by the end of this fiscal year and then it drops and it drops, so we're like. We're gonna, we're gonna be like at sixty eight percent.
You're just spending or losing kind of deal.
Yeah, it's nobody, I mean, that's, none of the guys wants to do it. They're like, you know, we're cops are always petty pinching and, and trying to. Come up with money. Now we're in a situation where we have to spend. Nobody likes to just blow it either, because we can't, we're not gonna go, you know. Put up a building or something, because now we've got main that's on a building and we're not gonna be able to stay next year.
That's what they were doing before.
So it's, it's one of those things. We're gonna try to help out. A lot of entities around within our region to make.
Make it better.
Make it better for them. Like we had a, we did have a request for one to purchase a vehicle. Well, to help purchase a vehicle and. They were gonna match ten thousand dollars, so you know, we're offering ten thousand, helps them with their transportation or their thing. They need the vehicle anyways. It's already in their budget, so little things like that. So. Other than that, it's going good, like global crisis, Dan, that's been going pretty good, right? I know we used it a few times over here and did talk to the lady that was in charge of that. Let them know that we were very impressed of how it's been working over here, so. It's been going good. And then I did have port authority meeting Thursday morning. We've got a desperate need for some natural gas near the terminal. Somehow that's becoming a, a topic again. Then they gave me permission to go ahead and, and discuss with. The. Company that did the original study. To just what it's, what this new company would need to come in just to manly. And pricing and stuff like that, so I'll need to figure out how much that's gonna cost, basically, because we still have some grant monies left. From the state, we can use towards the study, so it'll be reimbursable, so we would end up paying for it and then get reimbursed back, just like before, yeah, but we've still got, there's still money. Somewhat set aside for that study, even though it's correct.
It was like, wasn't it two hundred fifty thousand? Just start with, and yeah, we didn't.
We only spent like sixty.
Well, it was because of the timing, because we had already paid for some and it had to be like July one of whatever year, so we got reimbursed for everything after that.
Yeah, we reimbursed at sixty seven thousand or whatever it was, whatever we spent now. Yeah. But we have, we've got till June of twenty twenty two to spend the second summer hundred twenty five thousand towards engineering or studies.
Oh, you'll be able to do that.
So I'm gonna contact these people, so what it'll do is it'll, it'll go through our board to pay for it, but then the port authority will get reimbursement from the state and the state will pass back like it did before, so.
Cause was that just our portion or was that the whole?
That was just our portion. Mitchell got the, about the same, because we had split between the two counties for the whole study, so Mitchell did get sixty seven thousand or whatever roughly too, so.
Probably looking at doing kind of the same thing where we'll actually put the pipeline in and then probably eventually. Probably looking at doing kind of the same thing, where we'll actually put the pipeline in and then probably eventually sell that to.
Yeah, that's.
Black Hills or somebody like that.
That's what Melissa's working with, I know with the lion right now, um.
So we can actually build it for future.
So can we do that instead of broadband?
Yes.
Yeah.
With the ERP money?
Yes.
Yeah.
The temperature. So that is.
Okay.
Like very ideal. But anyways, um. You know, so I'm gonna. That's a good. Well, this, and the businesses are talking thirty to thirty five jobs, um, the initial build would be about a hundred.
Gonna find people there. And find people to work there.
And it'll support the other project, the other project on the, in the logistics part, would be needing gas too. Um, and that's actually maybe slated to be on paper within the next thirty days.
So we can make this work within the time frame, so.
Yeah, it's, it's timing, it's the big thing, um, but, that's like, like I said, reach out to this company and find out what's, what it's gonna take. To get to manly and then go from there, so. Really, really good couple opportunities for that area, so.
Cause it could be some WCDM too, maybe.
Yeah, I actually I've got a meeting with them tomorrow, uh, tomorrow, so I'm gonna mention that to them as well, so.
Yeah, I jumped on that, you.
Cause they did the one for the.
They helped. Yeah, so.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, definitely, so. Um, one of that, that's, so. Hey, and you go on the agenda for next speaker than, uh, maybe the discussion with the. Fair market hall at the casino, or at the interchange. We discussed that as long as, yeah, it's that.
Oh, um, Farm Bureau, pick up, pick me, Teresa was wondering head count.
Oh, I, I.
You?
I'll be there.
You guys?
Oh, this is tonight?
No.
Four, four, oh, I'm looking at the H, never off the line here.
Sorry.
Wednesday, I will not be. I can make that work.
You got plus one, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess so.
Yeah, so, um, this new or, okay, so four, you wanna pass it on to Teresa if you're stopping there?
Okay.
Always I can email to you.
Yeah. There you go. You're both good there? Just a second, a second. Right, meetings adjourned, thank you.